All right, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Byron Independent School District number 531 on January 6th at 6:19. We will have attendance, please.
Yeah, Jeremy.
Here.
David.
Here.
Lisa.
Here.
Carrie.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Alicia.
Here.
Nadia.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on the agenda items? If not, we'd look for a motion to approve.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? On to our discussion items. This is a discussion on a resolution relating the general obligation aid anticipation certificates of indebtedness, Series 2025A, ratifying the award of sale and establishing the terms thereof.
Thank you. We have the pleasure of having Jeff Sealy here from Ellers. So Jeff, if you want to come sit right there, and then I just want to remind the board, since some of you are new, and those that were on here, is that back in December, we approved for us to go through the process of working with Ellers. They did a, Ellers did a cash flow analysis for us, and we had to, it's this late, because we had to wait for the audit to be done from last school year, which didn't get done until December, late November, December, so we had to wait for that. And their estimation at the time, you approved that we could go up to $3.5 million as, for that. So at this time, though, they have been continuing to go looking at our finances and where we're at, and at this time, they are saying that we should go out for $3 million and don't have to go out for $3.5 million, which is, always saves us some money. And then Jeff can, maybe Jeff can give a little, what happened today, because some of it goes out today and happened today. What we will be asking, though, is that we will be asking for a resolution, to approve a resolution later at the meeting, because our debt service is about $4.9 million, and that's for all of our bonds and so forth. That's the principal and the interest and so forth. So it's a larger amount of money. It comes out at the end of January. So we have to make sure that we have money in the account. We do have the money in the account to cover it, but then that doesn't leave us much for cash flow afterwards to be able to meet bills and so forth. So it's just kind of the spot. Again, Ellers is our financial advising group that has been with the district for many years, helps us go through these, and again, I'll just let, turn it over to Jeff, and he can talk about this specific borrowing and so forth, so.
Yes, thank you. Well, it would be good to know I'm Jeff Sealy with Ellers, and today, we took bids on your aid anticipation certificates. Aid anticipation certificates, and of course, we refer to those as AACs. They're a means of borrowing for cash flow purposes. So you do an analysis of your cash flow and determine what you need. And we did an analysis, we had communications with your business office, Dan, and prior to that, Julie, and today, we identified $3 million as what we were going to do through the sale process. Now, we did receive, you should have a, what we call, sale day report. We did receive two bids. Now, this was put out nationally. There are not a lot of underwriting firms that are overly interested in the short-term cash flow borrowing, so like, if you were doing a capital bond for 20 years, you might have had eight or 10. In this case, we received two bids. And the low bid was 3.685, so a very good interest rate as it is. We're recommending $3 million on the par amount, the principal amount. We did look at this and gave you a pre-sale report with some estimates, and back then, we were looking at about $3.5 million with about 4.5% interest rate, came in better. So that's always good when it comes in better. So you have a parameter, you did a parameter resolution, which basically assigned the authority to authorize the sale of these to Mike and a board member. And that was assuming that parameter was met, which was $3.5 million or less, at 6% net interest cost or less. So both the parameters came in less. So there were some documents that were sent over to Mike earlier, he signed. Tonight is a ratifying resolution. You're basically ratifying the sale or the authorization that was made earlier today. So, again, good results. Oppenheimer, in this, we do have it listed in here. Oppenheimer is from Philadelphia. Piper Sandler was the second bidder, Chicago. Parmount, $3 million on this, and there is a payment, it's a, or schedule. There's only one payment on cash flow borrowing. It has to be paid by September 30th each year, so this is September 30th, 2025. Principal of $3 million, interest of 87,833. So that is a summary of what we, of the activities today.
May I have to apologize to the board, because I think you sent it to me when we were in our board retreat?
Probably.
Yeah, late this afternoon, so I did not get that exact thing you just talked about there.
Yep.
To you, at the time, but I will get to you moving forward, but maybe, so that's why, if they give you a funny look, like, what was that about? That was.
Oh, the proposal form?
Yeah, that, what you sent to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, the pre-sale, and the stuff today, oh no, the stuff you sent me late today with all the information.
Today. So there would be a proposal form, a proposal form or bid form, it's called, and you signed it and sent it back, but you needed.
But I still need you, Jeremy, to make sure you sign it today.
I haven't received it at that time, so.
Yeah.
We'll have to check to make sure, see if it's gone unsent, so we'll have to.
Yeah, and that, we need by midnight today, so that particular one. And then you'll have forms from the bond attorney, that there isn't quite the urgency with those. However, since you're all together, you might as well sign those and get those sent back to Andrea, and you can copy us on those.
What questions do you have?
I have a lot. I'm sorry.
Okay.
At the first board meeting, it sounds like this is good news, like you originally anticipated about $80,000 of interest. Do you know how much?
It was 87,000.
Initially, we were at like 140 or something.
Oh, we're, okay, okay.
Yeah.
So 87,000.
87,000. That was accrued interest, but you did get a little bit of a premium, well, $20,000 premium, which reduces your net interest cost from 87,000 to 67.
And my understanding, if you don't take this, we won't pay you, essentially. Is that true? I guess I'm.
It would put us in jeopardy.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would put us in jeopardy, because, again, we don't know, you know, the funding from the state comes in different times, different amounts. It's now, it gets, it's your paycheck a lot of times, or it's the same amount every two weeks, and you can bank on that, and so as this goes out, with our bills that happen during this time, you can correct me, Dan, if I'm speaking wrong, but you just don't know. We, again, right now, we have the money in Mizloff to be able to do that 4.9, but then what's left, you know, and I think in previous years, that's when sometimes our line of credit made it, and barely made it, and maxed that out, which then comes back that you have to pay that back within 45 days, and it has, and it has a higher interest rate. So, again, going with our, with Ellers, who's our financial advisors, and taking their advice on what other school districts do, and what's the best route moving forward, and having the pay behind us with the state aids and so forth, because we have so much in state aids coming in each year, we can use that if we have to. But that's kind of, yeah, we are, that's a long answer for, we'd be in jeopardy if we didn't get something soon.
And I think I just need to come up with a, there's no doubt that this is our best/only borrowing option?
Well, there's, these are aid anticipation certificates. There's tax anticipation certificates, which are pretty much the same thing. You would not have found any difference other than the name between the two. And there's also line of credits that are authorized through a bank. In this particular case, most districts will go with an aid anticipation certificate, because it's a competitive process. You generally get a better rate than if you just go down to, say, a local bank and do a line of credit. Usually, there's an upfront fixed fee of probably several thousand dollars to open it, and a higher interest rate. And if you had a very short period of time, say, a month or two months that you had to cover, a line of credit seems to make sense, because you only accrue interest while it's taken out, and then you pay it back. There's a little longer duration here, so the higher interest rate would accrue quite a bit more interest.
Okay. And then, you probably won't have the money to pay this back in September, right? So it's my understanding that that will look like taking out another one, or it's sort of.
Legally, you need the funds to pay off this one, so you.
Right. What will be in this?
But you'll be in a similar situation. You'll probably be doing a cash flow analysis to determine what your maximum borrowing is, and then working with the business office to refine the amount and so forth. So, yes, unless there were sufficient cuts made in the budget that would have corrected this.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Oh, and then I did read in the report that you had that, something about the credit enhancement program, so if for some reason you weren't able to pay it, is that true, that the state would pay it for us, but we would?
Yes, that's upon default. So if you don't make the payment, then the state will step in and make the payment. And what that does, then, is you get a better interest rate, because it's a little risk to investors if you have the state backing it. So that's why we do it.
So we're kind of paying for, a little bit, for the insurance of that?
Yeah, but you don't pay for it. The state offers it without charge. Now, you would have to default, and then they would step in, and then they would, you know, I've never seen it ever happen, but theoretically, they would withhold state aid, they'd pay themselves back, and so you'd end up paying for it here anyway.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Does that put us in SOD, if we default?
It depends on what you're, assigned fund balances. This is a cash transaction, is opposed operational.
And then, the last question I have, and this is a little bit tangential, but the report said that we currently have a double A minus bond rating.
Yes.
Can you tell us what that means, how much it matters, it will, how will this affect the bond rating?
So, a double A minus rating is a very, very good rating for a district that's not, say, suburban or metro district. Part of why you have the rating, some of it is internal items, how you manage your budget and so forth. Part of it is regional. You are basically almost a neighborhood of Rochester. So because you're tucked in next to Rochester, you are getting the benefit of the regional economics. So you have a very, very good rating for a district of this size, and considered, at least, outstate district. It, I'll be honest, it is in jeopardy with the way the budget has, has come, come up with some issues and so forth. The rating agency will, they follow this stuff. They'll know that you guys are cash flow borrowing. It's likely they're going to ask for a surveillance interview, which basically means they're going to check in on you and decide whether or not there should be a change in your rating. So the sooner it's all corrected, obviously, the better, but chances are, you're going to see a step down in your rating in the next year or so. Yeah. And how it affects you, it doesn't affect the existing bond. It only affects you when you sell new bonds. But it will affect you when and after you do new bonds. Say you do a refunding of the bonds in four years or so, and you have a rating that's one step or two steps lower, then you're going to pay more. In our words, the savings on the refunding or refinancing is going to be less. Or if you do new money bonds, which I don't think are in your future, you might pay a little more on that. But your existing bonds, they have their, that's all set. It won't affect that.
Very good questions.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or discussion on the resolution? Would look to take a motion to approve that resolution.
No, that's just a discussion. We'll do the, unless you want to jump down to the action area and do that, since it's on everyone's, we can certainly do that, since it's on everyone's thoughts.
Let's go over there.
Okay. So we'll look at our finance update, then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
If you have any questions, I'll be here if you run into something, you need my help on your other financial issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so finance update, and then we have Dan here, and appreciate Dan being here tonight and working on this, so I'm going to turn it over to Dan. Man, oh boy, I'll try to see if I can pull that up.
Yeah, you have to increase that a little, because there's lots of lines on there.
Yeah.
We're going to need board members. My name is Dan Pine, and I'm serving as interim director of finance for your school district. I was telling Ann, I have to make over 500 school board meetings I've been to in the last 30 years, so never thought I'd come to another one. There I am, just for the short term.
Thank you.
So at this point, you know, we've been scrambling to get a lot of things done, and we got, you know, Julie got the budget done, and that's good, and it's almost balanced, really close to balanced, and probably will end up, I'm thinking if all goes right, you know, that we'll have a little surplus at the end of the year. As far as working on the cash positions, we need to do a lot of bank reconciliations. Did go through all the revenues to make sure that we got them, but we haven't done the pen and paper of tying them out. We have one month tied out, but we'll have to do the next five months. And that's not, that's not really uncommon amongst smaller school districts, or even bigger ones. I was at a huge district, and sometimes my controller was three or four months behind on doing bank recs, because it's so tedious. But we're, I did go through all the revenues to make sure that everything the state said they were giving us, they gave us, flipped in all the bank accounts, to make sure that the county gave us all the money they're supposed to. We just have to tie out all the fees and the collections we do for community add-in, for fees for other events. For tonight, I put together kind of where we're at with this budget, now that we have a budget, and what we've spent our money on. So in this report, this is as of December 31st, as much as we know, as far as our expenses and revenues that are put into the system. First two columns are the history of what we had the last two years. Third column is the adopted budget. At this point, my projected column is the same as the adopted budget. I have enough time to do deeper projections, but I will re-project the revenue. Hopefully, I'll go up a little bit, and re-project the expenses. And then the next column, to the right, is what we receive year-to-date, and what we expended year-to-date, and then the remaining budget, and then the percent of what the budget is that we received or expended, and then just simply the year-to-date expenditures that would be as so far. So in that column, basically, six months, 50%. You'll see that my salaries and wages and employee benefits are not 50% because our teachers' pay schedule starts in September and ends at the end of August, so we'll be, we're paying them through the next fiscal year. But it does give you an idea on how we're doing revenue-wise, which is still kind of in flux, but these are just the stuff I pull off the bank statements, knowing that the money is coming. There might be some accruals in there that would lower down some of the state aids, but we'll also accrue next year, too. As far as expenditures go, we like to break them down into salaries and wages, you know, by object, what it's for. And we also break it down by program, where we spend it. So on the object side, we always break them down into salaries and wages, employee benefits, services, supplies, equipment, just general fund debt service, not the, our total debt service, which is a different fund, other expenditures, and some other financing uses. And you can see that in total, our expenses, adjusting for the teacher's pay schedule, is running at about 36%. Most of our categories in pretty good shape, and that's against probably what I'm guessing would be about a 40% budget, so it's ahead of budget. And then the next part is where we spend the money, and that's site administration, that's your, your school principals. District administration is, is the district administrators, support services, our, your technology, your business office staff, payroll, things like that. Regular instruction, self-explanatory, extracurricular activities, vocational instruction, special education. And I did notice that, and that's, that's one thing you might look at as you, as we look at, you know, what's going on with the budget, what's happening, but, and this is happening everywhere. But you can just see, in two years, your special ed expenses went from 3.2 million to 4.2 million dollars. Instructional support, are those programs, that's support to teaching staff, pupil support, are those programs like, besides transportation, but there's also the programs like counseling and health services. The facilities, self-explanatory, and then other financing uses. So same, same dollar expenses, but just where they're spent as opposed to how they're spent. And that's kind of where we're at right now, so right now, you know, it looks like we're on track, at least in budget, and hopefully, we can build up a little surplus going into the next year. Any questions?
Thank you for putting this together, and for being here tonight. Do you know how the percentage totals compare to, like, last year or the prior year?
Um.
I understand if you don't have it.
No, I didn't run that. Still a little rusty with smart finance. I haven't used it for 10 years, but we, I think some of it is a little distorted, the fact that the budget was, was spent by so much. So the budget was way too small, as we know, so it's going to, it's going to be a little distorted, but I'll see what I can figure out.
Are you saying you don't think it would be helpful? I trust you, if that's what you're saying.
I mean, it might be interesting, I don't know if this is going to help us make any financial decisions. I think we know what happened, and we did budget enough to cover our.
Right, right.
Our expenses, but we didn't have the revenue to cover it anyway, so you're going to see really distorted numbers by this account.
I don't want to put you on tasks and waste your time, if it's something that, you know. Thank you.
Is the jump in special education due to mental health or IUPs, or is, and is, the second part to that is, is it that where the state actually provides more funding when we have?
Well, I'm talking about straight expenses. Your revenue's gone up too.
Okay.
That's part of your revenue increase in the state aids, is your special ed revenue, because your revenue is a direct reflection of the expenses. It runs about 60% of your expenses you'll get back.
Okay.
And I, well, I don't have the exact data, but I can tell you that our number of IUPs and number of kids receiving service have gone up, and as well as the cost of, of that. You know, we need more payers, we need more help in those areas, and so that's why it's gone up a million dollars. And at the same time, when you have the need, I'll be honest, as we went through that, we also knew that we would be getting some of that funding back, right? So when we're really looking at helping kids who have IUPs and having staff and so forth for them as much as we could, we also knew that it wasn't 100% cost of that million dollars, it was a percentage. The problem is, is you don't get paid for that until another year or two later. You know, that funding for special ed catches up a year or two later, so that's the hard part. And until the legislature helps out with cross-subsidy and takes some of that, and gives us a little bit more money moving forward, that's always going to be, in every district, that's where a lot of our expenditures go to.
We'll have to look at what the percentage is compared to different years, and things like that, too. These are mandated expenses that we certainly are not any, not even suggesting that we reduce our, our services.
Oh, right.
It's just, it's been a statewide trend.
Sure.
And it's really incumbent upon the federal government to actually do what they promised to do a long time ago, to subsidize 40% of the deficit, and maybe we got higher than 16%.
Wow. Thanks, Dan.
Any other questions for Dan?
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. All right, on to our tentative budget planning and timelines for '25, '26.
Yes, so we've been working through a lot of timelines, and I just, we keep revising them. So I wanted to go through this with the board and with the committee, so they can have an idea where we're moving to. Again, it's tentative, we can make some changes, but right now, enrollment projections, that will be at the next meeting. So that is our first window of receiving and accepting open enrollment applications, so we'll see how many applications we have out. We have had ads out, anything on social media, Jen Hegna spent 50 bucks to put some ads out, anywhere within 30 miles to say, hey, we're taking open enrollment, and taking registrations for enrollment for next year, to kind of see where that, so we'll see. January 21st is our first window, and then there'll be, I think, in April again, and then in May, we'll take, and as people turn in, they can still apply for next year, all the way through next October, if we, and then the board, if you decide to close it again at that time, or leave it open, but the first window is, and then what we do is we look at those projections as a leadership team, start looking at already what we're looking at reductions, is that going to make things different for us? Are we going to have to do more? And so we start looking, but we are working already on reviewing of staff, staffing and adjustments for next year, with the board giving us the direction to go 1.6 million dollars for next year. And so that's happening January through February. Then the leadership team, our tentative plan right now is we're working many hours to, we want to come to you with recommendations for budget adjustments for next year on Tuesday, February 18th. Remember, it's a Tuesday meeting, because Monday's a holiday, so we can't meet on that Monday, so it's a Tuesday night meeting, and we will come with our recommendations, explain our recommendations, the rationale, and everything behind that, allow you to answer questions and so forth. And then we are going to have a special meeting to approve that list and so forth on February 24th. And then on March 3rd, is our regular work session type meeting. That's when the board will take action on the teacher contract non-renewals and the unrequested leave of absences. So those are when names get put to positions that will, that we are reducing and so forth. So that's, that will be tough two weeks to kind of go through and so forth, but give us time as a leadership team to really look at our plan, make, and make sure our eyes are dotted, our Ts are crossed, and then come to you with our plan to move forward for next year. Then, after that, April 21st, we'll be looking at our teachers, our finalized plan, what does that, once we figure out in this area who we don't have anymore, or what reductions, what programs are, now we'll start planning what does next year look like in each building. And then we will, on May 19th, the budget committee will come together, and we'll be looking at review of next year's budget, and what Dan has figured out for next year, once with all those cuts are figured in there, what does that look like, what does, what's our adopted budget look like for that. We will meet with the budget committee on the 19th. On June 2nd, at that meeting, he'll present the preliminary budget to the school board and answer any questions at that time regarding next year's budget. And then by the state, we, by June 30th, we have to have an approved budget of, for '25, '26. And that, so you will, at that time, after seeing it two weeks before, approve next year's budget, a preliminary budget for next year. So that's kind of our timeline moving forward. Are there any questions, or?
On the February 18th, with the leadership team, are we able to have some members of the leadership team here in case we have questions, or does that all come through you?
Nope, I'm sure they will be here. They were here last year, and they can certainly answer questions. And, you know, I'm hoping that one of the things that I would like to do is look at who's on the personnel committee, maybe bring them in on one of the days to our leadership meeting, or make a meeting just for us to kind of bounce some ideas, or bounce our ideas off of the personnel committee, answer some questions. We can, through, during this process, I'll be communicating with the board on certain things, but then we can, we're trying to be, last year was such a fast and furious pace in April, May. This year, we can do a little bit more and ask some more questions, and then have some rationale behind things, and be able to explain things better. But yeah, I can certainly ask them to be here, I'm sure they will, in case there is
We'll move on to the discussion about the gymnastics center?
Yes, so there are the next three, we brought up the financing facilities. There have been questions that we've been pondering as a leadership team, and they are some that are money saving, you know, they are possible money, money saving moving forward, and some people don't even know we have this going on. So in some ways, the first one is the gymnastics center, which is housed across fourteen. We've been in the gymnastics facility for about, about ten years. We just last year looked at redoing the lease agreement at the time. We can get out of the lease agreement for, with a six-month notice and so forth. And in, in our case, we were previously doing lease levy to have, to be able to do that, we're able to do that by law. Anything that we rent and so forth for these types of activities, you can lease. And so, you know, it was a, we leased it for about fifty thousand dollars a year because we own it, we have it year-round. Even though gymnastics season is just from October till March usually, we have it year-round because our community education runs classes out there. There's twenty girls or so that are gymnasts now that are in season, and then, but in the spring, summer, and fall, they run their classes to the community. And then there, there, there's about at least a hundred and twenty participants who are part of that, that use that facility. And if you haven't been there, it's pretty tight with all the equipment and so forth, but the equipment gets to stay up year-round, and it's their spot. And they do promoting, and we have a very successful team, very active community when it comes to gymnastics and so forth. But it does come with a cost of fifty thousand dollars that unfortunately last year was not, something happened with the lease levy, and so that went against us as well. This year, with Julie though, made sure that it was part of this year's twenty-five, twenty-six lease, or twenty, twenty-five lease levy for this year. Again, fifty thousand dollars spread out over a lot of community members is, is minimal. If you think about, you know, probably six to eight dollars a year, depending on average size or, or, or average house. And then, but we also are in charge of utility costs, which is another fifty thousand dollars or so. When you look at all the utility and some of the, and the upkeep and those sort of things, that's part of the lease, and is, we're still in charge of that. And so that's where we're trying to figure out is, do we save the fifty thousand dollars and not have, and get out of the lease for the gymnastics center? We talked to Dan and somebody else who's a finance person on our financing facilities, talked about reworking the lease. So last week I reached out to the person that, that represents the owner and asked him if we could rework the lease, because if the owner gets paid for the utilities or takes on utilities and then invoices us by state statute and how the school finance works, then we can actually take, get more lease levy, we can levy more of that, fifty thousand dollars. We'd still have to pay some of our general fund, but much more of it would be that way. Here's the downside, if you don't, if we don't have that gymnastics center to use, is that we would have to, that equipment, it's not like you can put it up and take it down every day. Those floors take a lot and takes a lot of beating, and that equipment is pretty heavy. And so you can't put it up and down every day, so the alternative would be to move it to the community education center in the, in the big gym there, put it up and leave it up from October to March, which we could certainly do, because it is for a school event and not necessarily for a community, but we would probably lose some of the community stuff unless you left it up all year long. Right now, if you go over there, probably three days a week, maybe four, I haven't checked lately, you have pickleballers there in the morning, the seniors who are there playing pickleball in the winter, same time gymnastic season's at, and we also rent the evenings to the basketball, youth basketball association, and we make revenue off of that. So that, that's the downside about not keeping the gymnastics center, is that it's about the only place we would move it. That's where it used to be in the past, was at the C E C or the DAX. They used to have a stage where they could store everything. Now that's a fitness center that we renovated. We renovated the C E C, you know, to be a community center. And, and it's just, those things, I wanted to put this out there, have you ask any questions? I'm not looking for any votes or anything, but ask questions about, maybe give some ideas about moving it forward. The financing facilities, they talked about still keeping it. If, you know, we will be going out for an operating referendum in the fall, it would be something that could certainly be promoted, that if, if that next operating referendum doesn't pass, you know, that we wouldn't be able to afford keeping it any longer. You could do it at that time, you know, but I'm just, those are the, you know, the pluses and minuses of having that gymnastics center, and what's it costing us, and what we're trying to do to, to do it, but it is an expense. So that's why I want to bring it up to you to have a discussion about.
And if it was shared at the C E C year-round, it would impede on those other sports that you
You, you, you would have to leave it up year-round and, and take it down, and, and it would be hard to take it up and down often. You could do it for certain events, but it would be hard to do on a regular basis. You could just leave it up for the season, but then I will be honest, that gym is not used a whole lot in the fall, in the summers and so forth, because pickleballers are outside, and the basketball teams are not in, playing a lot. They, they don't need as many teams because their season is during the winter, the same time the gymnastics is. So that's kind of what we're, so I just wanted the board, just like the other two that I'll be bringing up, have a discussion regarding it, be aware of it, let the community know that it's there, but looking for, you know, your thoughts.
Go ahead. So you have talked to the person that's leasing it about invoicing us?
I sent an email to the person that represents them, and he was going to reach out to, to the owner. I have not heard back yet from that. But the person who owns it has been very good in the last ten years to work with, and so I'm hopeful that we would be able to do that, because he, they're a big fan of gymnastics, and, and, and we take care of that building, help them take care of that building, and so, and there hasn't been any problems, and it's, it's kind of a win-win for us, so maybe he would be able to do that, because he's still, still gonna get his money, he's just sending us an invoice instead of us doing it somewhere else, somewhere else.
Save it from coming out of our general fund.
Correct, yeah.
That'd be great.
And I'd be curious what the revenue side is versus the expenses. You know, if we're gonna lose a hundred thousand dollars in revenue from pickleballers, basketball associations and all that to make up fifty grand, it's lopsided.
Yeah, I, I would, I would be, the basketball association may pay a little bit more. I will be honest, I don't know how much we, I can find that out, how much we pay the pickleballers, but I will tell you that those
It's probably very affordable.
The, well, it probably is very affordable, the, the key will be though, that if you say that that might have to go away when it comes to operating referendum, and they're the ones who are sometimes the no votes, because they're the seniors, I'll be just generalizing a little bit.
Yep, yep.
Right? And you want to keep that space for them, they're more apt to say yes to any future votes that you might do and so forth, because it, because you're trying to take care of them, but if we don't pass it, we are gonna have to make a change. And so it, it might be a different type of value moving forward.
And you had more than it was in the goodwill. We did promise them that this would be a community center when we went out to the Capitol referendum, so it would also be
And isn't that a brand-new floor?
It's, it's redone. It was refi- refinished and everything like that, because it was pretty old, it was the last one, and that needed to be refitted. So it is refinished, you know, we put, you know, ten million dollars, eleven million dollars into that building to, to make it work, and, because at the time we were growing, and some, they wanted to have something in the center of the city, center of the town to be that. Now we're at the point where we need to look at money-saving things, and the gymnastics center is one of those things that costs us money, so, but I want to bring it forward to you.
Is there, is there still like a five-year plan on that, where it might be obsolete at that point anyway?
Well, if, if you talk to Al Roder, the city administrator, in his perfect view, it'd be a, a five-year plan, that, because they are scheduled to put the fourteen, move itself, and, and put fourteen going across there, but the money, or the state still hasn't said they had money for it, and looking at their future, what they said they're gonna have in the next couple of years, you know, again, that was, that's Al's hope, and, but I think they've been talking about putting the overpass, or the fourteen in there with an overpass for, I don't know, I, I heard fifteen years, ten, fifteen years now? It could be another ten or fifteen years before that happens. But at that point, then, you know, they could, it's scheduled to go right probably through that building or close to it, then we would have to make a change at that time if that's the case, if it's still, if we still want it functional and still want to lease it.
Any other questions or discussion on the gymnastics center?
We'll hope for good news and reassess when we hear that.
All right, on to discussion about leasing the district office.
Yeah, so I know that the district office has also been something that has been brought up. I just wanted to give you an update, a little history. Back in twenty-twenty-one, the district office was purchased for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars as part of the bond referendum. And the reason why it was purchased at the time, the school board had a demographic study in twenty-twenty that was saying that we were growing and would have to look at maybe building new schools and need more space. And so the district office was at the community ed center with the old DAX and so forth, and had moved from household every five years, but that's where it was when I started in twenty-twenty-one. And so the, we, we ended up buying Zed, because we bought from Zed for that cost. There's fourteen office spaces, small conference room, larger conference room, as, as you know, last year there were, all the spaces were, were occupied. Because of budget reductions, we've lost several people in there, so it's not as busy, it's not as full. But, and right now, as you know, that our, from what we were told in twenty-twenty, we had another demographic study this, this summer, and it shows that those birth rates are hitting us, and we may not need as much room as we thought. So everybody's like, well, maybe we should sell then the district office space again. And what we found out, we had a couple of options, is to sell it or to lease it, but because it was bought on bond, we can't lease it. By state statute, we can't use it for money, you know, to make money off of it and so forth, so we can't lease it. And if, if we sell it, the money goes back to the, doesn't go into our general fund. We don't get the six fifty or whatever we'd sell for, to go directly into our, our fund, it would go back to the taxpayers of the community. Again, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars spread out over all the tax, you know, depending the value of your home, and you'd see a decrease for one, one-time decrease. And then the following year, that would come back off, it would go back up. It does run us about eighty-five hundred dollars a year for utilities. Does still house the district office, a couple of directors. All of our files are there that need to be secured, the special ed files that need to be secured are still there as well. But there is room at the community ed center. We could go where the ALC offices were, which would be in the back of the building, on the bottom floor most likely. We would end up having to repla- our, our displace some people who have offices there already. We'd have to take over some of their conference rooms that we have redesigned and remodeled for those lockup files and so forth. I mean, it can be done, and, but then you would either sell it, sell that building, or you would leave it dormant until you're ready to move into it. At some point, there's, I still contend, we're in a downswing, but at some point Byron will grow again. And again, when we moved from the C E C, it was the redesign, I didn't mention, we redesigned the old boardroom into a early childhood special education room, so that all the preschoolers could be together, those in one, through special ed and have the same age groups be together, because the early childhood special ed was over at the primary school. Now, as we're lower in enrollment, there might be some opportunities to move some classrooms or move that back over to the primary school. Those are things that the leadership team is looking at and so forth, but I know some people said just sell the district office. It's not as easy as selling the district office and throwing six fifty, six hundred and fifty thousand back in your, in your bank account. You know, it's not, not that way. I, I'm looking for any discussion with that, people's thoughts.
So selling the district office would give the district no financial gain other than saving eighty-five hundred dollars a year?
Yeah, roughly eighty-five hundred dollars, then, you know, you have some miscellaneous things or whatever. You know, when we bought it, remember we, for those of you that were on the board, we had, we, we bought it, we didn't have a lot of money, we had enough money to replace the carpet, and we kept all, we asked Zed, they were getting all new stuff over in Cassin, so we said, can we keep all your off, can we keep all your desks? So if you go and see our desks, a lot of them, unless they purchased their own new desk, you know, or whatever, a lot of them are the old desks. And some staff members helped paint every room in that place, thirty-three gallons of paint in order to, to get it to where it is now. So, but yeah, right now, there wouldn't be any financial except for to our taxpayers, and we would be saving eighty-five to ten thousand dollars, ten grand a year, so.
I also, I guess, you might be able to answer this better, would losing like a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar asset affect our bond rating?
No.
No, okay. I mean, I don't see any point in selling it personally. Like, I feel like, should hang on to the asset right now, that's not, it's too bad we can't lease it. I feel like that would be a deal.
We, we checked, and I worked with a realtor, and I had her all ready to sign up, and then Dan came and said, I don't think you can do that. And then he ended up checking and finding out, yeah, that that's not a possibility for us to do, so. So it would have been for three to five years to be able to lease it, make some money off, and then be able to grow, when, when the district grew again, be able to go back into that spot. It is a, a good spot, it's where people can know where to go, it's not super busy, and people can get in and out rather easily, and there's some good spaces for meetings and so forth moving forward. But again, it was, it was bought with good intentions and bought with the projection of we were growing and that would be a spot where all the, all the directors, everybody could be together, so it was bought with good intentions. I think if we had the information that we would be decreasing at this time, we maybe would have done something different and looked somehow, but again, at, at some point your district office does, you know, you're getting big enough where you don't want to have to be moving every five years to be in a basement somewhere and have that be your district office to be either. But it, it, right now, with one point six million dollars reductions, I, I am proud that the leadership team is looking, and the community is looking at how can we do the most we can on the outside, so.
Well, and I certainly understand why people say we should just sell it, like at face value, it seems like that would be the smart thing to do.
Any further questions or discussion on the district office? Move on to discussion about the land behind the high school?
Yes, so, so the day after we failed the operating referendum, I had a person come in and offered to buy the fifteen acres of land behind the high school. So in two thousand and six, when we built the high school, there's also fifteen acres of land. So when you sit in the, in the home side of the football stadium, you know, or soccer stadium on those gorgeous nights, and you see that sunset going over that farmland behind, that's, that's our district farmland, that's our district land. It is on the other side of a, a wetland or the creek that goes through, a holding pond, that we couldn't do a lot of building in there. I, the road line goes up so far, I asked Al Roder about any future developments there. They don't have any future plans at this point to do that. He says it would be a long time before that area could be developed or we could use it for, you know, people talk about a bus garage. It's such a big hill, and, you know, behind there, it, it would have to be a lot of dirt moving to make that happen. Right now, one of the air, local farmers that own land right behind there, they've been for I don't know how many years farming that land for us, so we pay for some of the seed and some of the things, and then he, he farms it and then gives us to build what it would, what it costs for him to do it, and we give him, and then we get the rest. Each year, and in the three years I've been here, it, it makes about between five thousand and six thousand dollars a year for the school district and so forth. I brought up the financing facilities committee, you know, do we sell it? Because the person who came in kind of gave us a low-ball bid, I think, but we would definitely go to a realtor and use a realtor to negotiate and put it out there if we want to sell it. You know, it's fifteen acres, you're looking at, you sell it for what, it might be, you know, it's gonna be more than a hundred thousand dollars, maybe it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do so, and then kind of go from there. Or you could still use it as a farming, we could still u- work with the farmer to do that until we have a better idea in the future. One of the, a couple of people on the financing facilities brought up a conservation program that the state has, and they pay you so much per acre. I, I admittedly told them I needed some help finding information, because I'm a city guy, and and, you know, all this is new to me because you would then put down grass and and make it a prairie and then you could do some things from there. I don't know much about that, I'm trying to get information. Alicia was part of that meeting, she wrote that right now that they're putting a hold on that program.
Yeah, the website, but it's C R P, like the conservation program that the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil said that their assignment is currently on hold, but I don't know. Just, I think it would probably, if it did qualify, because it's being farmed, it would probably be a similar income as the crop share agreement we currently have and it feels like a, maybe a better option, but but also a bit of a wash.
Yeah, and right now we have a great relationship with that farmer, you know, he's been doing it, we can continue to do it, look at, see if that program open or if the board says no, we want, you know, if you want me to get a realtor and put it out there and see what sort of bids we can get and sell the land. You know, a lot of times, school districts don't like to sell land and so forth, but again, I, asking Al Roder from the city and so forth, I, we don't see that as being something that can be developed or used as like a bus garage or something on that side, right? But we certainly would wind up with the proper channels if we are to sell it and try to get bids and make sure that we're getting the right cost for it. And I would probably have to do that within the next couple of months because I, again, we may have to go for one year, one more year of farming, I'm not quite sure when the farming starts. Again, being a city guy, I'm like, you know, so, but we could, if if the board wants me to look into that, I certainly can, if they want me to hold and say, let's farm it for another year, find out what this program is and then decide to sell it. But again, at one point six million dollars, you know, over a hundred thousand dollars would come in, could be something, but it depends on how you feel as a board moving forward. Or what information, more information do you need that I can bring back to the board?
Oh, I saw when I was on the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil, this might have been over seven, but it said to email the Oldsack County Soil and Water Conservation to get more information about what they're doing here and I did, so I come like, you know, I get back from them. I personally feel like if we're making an income off of it, we should not sell it.
But I feel like there's a net gain.
Right. I also think, you know, in the future, when that land will be developed eventually, like that's, it'll actually be worth.
I I try, we have the farmer who does it, which is great because I tried to, back in twenty twenty-one, I tried to do a land swap for some more land with one of the people that are adjacent to that and they're farmers and like, well, here's some farmland, you could do that. And they actually said, it's too hilly, too rocky, it's not great farmland, you know, and they didn't really want to do a swap for it. But now people, I I, it was funny because it was, he was trying to be opportunistic and it was the day after we did pass the referendum, say, hey, I can, I'll buy that for this much money and I'll give you this much and that will help you. So that's what we've been kind of looking at and I've been asking around and again.
You wouldn't be able to control it, it's in there, so it could end up being full of you.
It 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 could be, yeah, it could be whatever, but I think this farmer was willing to to at least for now do it, but maybe he was seeing down the road that it might be something that might be developed and then becomes more money as it developed than anything else, so.
I thought we had heard one time from Al that that there was a developer from Chicago or something interesting in that land?
Yeah, no, not in that land.
Not in that?
The developer from Chicago owns the hundred and thirty-eight acres from the high school, south, goes around the one house, around the one property that's on five and goes all the way to the bus garage. We own the two and a half acres by the bus garage and that developer owns all that other farmland. He is is leasing it out or letting another farmer for now farm it until they are ready. They have not, but it it wasn't behind, that was another, we actually asked the developer if they wanted that land as a swap for that right next to the high school parking lot there on the south side, there was that nice land and we're going to try to get that in twenty twenty-one, I thought we had that, but we didn't, we asked them, hey, would you swap that and we would take, and you can have behind us and so forth, but they said because of the terrain and the water and stuff, it wasn't, they wouldn't do that and so, not this time. Now they could come back, they have not done any plans, submitted any plans since they bought it two years ago and to the, to the city as far as I know, they used, they at one point put in three different plans, ready to go and the city had had their ordinances that they put a memorandum on or a moratorium on selling there or doing, so they could get the ordinances because of stuff like that. Now they have that, those ordinances set and we just haven't heard from that developer. When I meet with Al once a month, he just hasn't heard or they haven't seen any plans yet, at least in the last few years.
The clinic does have that, yeah.
Yeah, but then there is a, that's the hard part is there's a hundred and thirty-eight acres and one of his plans had over three hundred homes and townhomes and and shops in there and other things going into that area. And so that happens, then you're looking at, you know, because they weren't, they're not your, I'll be honest, they're not your five hundred thousand dollar homes, they were your more early first family type homes and that sort of thing and they could go pretty quickly. And so, and usually those have kids and so those go in there, it's going to be three years and your, the enrollment here is going to explode and you'll be back to trying to find space, right? And but again, we just haven't heard, you don't know what it is and right now you can't plan on that for enrollment, saying three years will be full, it's not going to have, that may not happen, but it could, depending on what's, that's, that's still up in your housing. Remember with with.
Glennis.
With with, no, Hazel.
Hazel.
With Hazel, that was always the asterisk, is housing, housing, we don't know about housing and that, that could change any of her numbers, so. So I I appreciate the conversation and we, what I'm hearing is that we should maybe hang on to it. It could be something that if you have to do this again next year, you have a better idea, maybe you would have, want to do that if you don't pass the referendum, maybe you would still want to buy it at that point, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think just hanging on.
I can, I'll let you know if I hear back about the C R P, but I think you should even pop share.
Okay, well, all right, thank you.
On to the M S B A conference information.
Yeah, just for those, just want people to know, every year we have, Minnesota School Board Association has their leadership conference and we have people that go because it's great information. This year, Lisa's going, Carrie's going and Nadia is going and so I did reach out to those that are going. On the second night, other area school districts are getting together for a dinner, you know, get to know each other, talk to other board members, that sort of thing. And there's a lot of different sessions. It starts on Thursday morning, but there are hotel rooms for Wednesday night and Thursday night. What we do, ask you to do is as we've done this in the past, is once you go to some breakout sessions, maybe talk to each other, split up, talk, go to different sessions and then come back and share with the board what are some of those things that you've learned and what are some ideas that you might have moving forward for the board that we should further investigate. But it is great, it's great training for board members and and it goes, starts Thursday morning and ends by at noon on Friday. So just wanted to let you know and there's no, the only cost that we incur is the hotel room, the conference itself is is free, so.
All right, we'll move on to action item, action on the resolution relating to the general obligation aid anticipation certificates of indebtedness.
So do you want to read that, Carrie, because this is signed by you then at the end, so.
Resolution relating to the three million dollar general obligation aid anticipation certificates of indebtedness, series twenty twenty-five A, ratifying the ward of sale and establishing the terms thereof. I, the undersigned, being the duly qualified and acting recording officer of the public corporation issuing the obligations referred to in the title of this certificate, certify that the documents attached hereto as described above have been carefully compared with the original records of said corporation in my legal custody from which they have been transcribed. That said, documents are correct and complete transcript of the minutes of a meeting of the governing, a governing body of said corporation and correct and complete copies of all resolutions and other actions taken and all documents approved by the governing body at said meeting so far as they relate to that said obligations and that said meeting was duly held by the governing body at the time and place and was attended throughout by the members indicated above pursuant to call and notice of such meeting given as required by law.
Okay, any further questions or discussion on the resolution? Would entertain a motion?
Motion to vote on my resolution approved.
Good. Motion and a second, roll call, vote?
Yep, Jeremy?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Motion carries. That leads us to the final item on the agenda, would look for a motion to adjourn.
So Lucy?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. I'm going to check my email now.
You check your email now and see if it's, if you need to use my computer, you can sign in, you certainly can. But we'll meet and let's take about a five, ten minute break.